Well, ready?
I'm ready. Um, Mayor Byers, can I say one thing real quick?
You sure can.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing. Um, I'm just, I can't be more happy and proud of my staff because they've just done an amazing job and I know this has been a really hard time for all of us and just kind of figuring out the best way to do things and they have just been working together and communicating daily and I'm just, I can't be more happy. So I just wanted to say thank you.
And I wanted to say a thing that I wanted to make sure that we got that out. Um, Megan, Heather, Marsha, Jake, I don't know if you guys are keeping the village together and I just wanted to say thanks. So let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. And Jake. Yeah, and I would echo that. I thank you for not kicking me out when I show up to the office. Oh, well. I haven't seen you in a while, Jake, so I'll have to stop in the back. Uh, okay, if we're ready, then I'd like to convene the Village of Webster Board meeting, uh, via teleconference, April 23rd, 2020. And, um, I think first of all, uh, we don't have the flag or plaque, but, um, I'd like to open this up to public comment. I believe we have one resident online, possibly, but, um, if anyone would like to make a comment, I believe that you can do so. State name and, uh, address. Uh, I guess not. Okay. Well, then in that case, I'll close public comment and we'll move to the scheduled agenda. Uh, item number one is a resolution to approve the 2020 to 2021 fee schedule. Uh, you have that in front of you. I believe that there are two free change make or to consider. Um, those are in yellow. So if you would note those, um, I believe that one of them is a change from, uh, $25 to $30. Um, I believe that's what it is. One of them, uh, is a change, um, oh, what's the other two? Somebody has that. You can refresh my mind because it's not on the screen and I don't have it in front of me. Um,
As far as photos.
For the pictures, uh, I believe it was, uh, consideration of going from $12 to 14 or 15 and, um, and/or instituting, I think, a fee, one or the other. Is that correct?
Can't hear you.
I can't. It's 12 with a question mark.
Heather, I can't. We can't hear you.
We can't, yeah.
On mute.
Heather?
We can't hear you talking at all.
What do you want me to talk about? Wood chips? My Heather figures this out?
Yep.
Uh, wood chips was another one. Uh, we typically have, uh, an abundance of wood chips for our monthly brush pickup. And John has, uh, asked in the past and I'm hesitant, but I guess I agree this time. Um, you know, if somebody goes down to the plant, picks up the wood chips, it's, uh, you know, free. We just load them and they can, they can go. Um, and the delivery charges that we had were $20 for a small truck and 40 for a large truck. Um, and non-residents would just 40 and 70. Um, we're suggesting maybe making those just $10, uh, for village residents of 15 outside of the village with a five-mile radius or five-mile delivery area. Um, that, you know, frankly, nobody's taking the wood chips, um, or very few people are. The ones that would would take more except their $70 alone. That's pretty crazy or something we want to get rid of. So.
Yeah, I like it. That's a good idea. I don't know. What is it everybody agrees on?
I like it.
I think it's covering the cost.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, to me anyways, it's, uh, it's something that is not necessarily free because we have to do the transporting of it, the loading of it, but the cost is minimal as far as I'm concerned compared to what it was. And, uh, I would be in favor of it. Okay.
I'm good.
Heather, are you back? No. Okay. Uh, I don't know how the board feels in terms of the, uh, change in the pictures. I would probably not want to go to 15. I'd rather see going from 12 to 14. Maybe an odd number, but, um, uh, it does then undercut pictures being taken in other places.
I don't know. I just seen that everybody was quite happy that we could do the whole process right there. So I don't know if a dollar's gonna make a difference at all.
Yeah, why not for 13?
Have you, yeah, have Joe, Megan, has anybody stated that they didn't like the price of?
No. And Heather, Heather texted me to say, uh, she's proposing $13 for the photos and also the renewal mailing fee. Uh, when I emailed out, uh, our profit burden for the photos is huge. Um, so, well, speaking only for myself, it makes more sense to me for us to leave the photos alone and, um, start charging some kind, like the flat fee to help offset the postage costs of the renewals.
I like that, Heather. I like that much, too.
That is not consensus. That's just.
Your opinion, you go.
I'm proposing to raise the, um, picture fee from 12 to 13 and putting in a postage fee.
Oh. Oh, that's what I was saying.
I think we should leave the price the same.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Honestly, we just raised it.
Yeah.
Sure, the same, 12?
Yes.
That's what I think, but that's just me. I think we just raised it like two years ago and I think that's what draws people in.
Yep.
I've heard lots of good reviews about our year system that you have there, so I, I'd go along with what Marsha's saying.
Hey, but they're doing along with an increase and or putting in mailing fee?
So the reason for that is, um, the photo fee or the photos, we don't really, it's not, it's not a huge, it's not a huge burden on us. But the renewal fees, when we say that, um, what that means is when someone comes in with a renewal application, um, we don't, we don't charge to mail it out and it's completely just free to mail and it, it, we should charge something like, so we said just a $2 flat fee. The postage charges around $7 and we just, um, we should, we have to charge something to, to send out the renewal fee. Yeah, in my opinion.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who agrees? Can I hear you okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I would put that as well. I agree.
This might seem like a kind of stupid thing, but if the photos are 12 and the people who come in for renewals are paying for the photo and the mailing. If we're, if we charge $3, then they've got a 15 and we don't have singles. It's not a big deal, but.
Yeah, but if it can't, no, it's a common sense thing.
I would charge 12 for the photo. Charge $3 for the, uh, $2 for the mailing. Or you can just bump up the photo and the mailing as quote unquote free.
But that's, um, that would kind of, that would penalize the people who are not doing renewals and would be covering the people who are doing it. No sense. I would, I would like to see, you know, if you're going in for a renewal, then you're the one who should be paying for us to send it.
I agree. Yep.
So you're, you're proposing then that we leave the cost of the picture as 12, which it is now? And add a $2 charge for renewal or postage?
A $3. But, you know, to whatever.
Yeah.
So what is it, uh, board? Is it $2 or $3 that, uh, you would like?
3 is fine. I don't care. I.
I think 3 is good. I think it's 15.
If you're charging 7, guess what? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we would, for that particular item, we're looking at, uh, leaving the cost of the photo the same at $12 and putting in a charge of $3 for postage or renewal.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. Right? And, uh, we talked about the wood chips and I was good with that. Um, so I think that. I'll turn to 3.
Yeah, Jake.
I'm sorry. There was a, a reinspection fee too, just for the sanitary sewers under sewer inspection or reinspection.
Yep, 25.
Yeah, and 30. It was just to keep it consistent with the other reinspection fees.
Oh.
Yeah. Did I agree to that one? 25 to 30. Right. So, uh, if everyone is agreed, then that will be the, uh, changes. Uh, so I need a resolution to approve or a motion to approve the 2020-21 fee schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Valcain?
Hi.
Trusty Valcain, can you hear me?
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, making sure. Yeah. Trusty Valcain? Trusty Lauer?
Hi.
Uh, Trusty Lancy?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Yay.
Okay, second item is a resolution to approve the 2020-21 payroll chart. I believe you have that in front of you. Um, and there is a note that, uh, the, uh, the payroll for the union will, is tentative. That is a matter of negotiations that are still ongoing. Otherwise, uh, I, I would make one comment to that, uh, in light of the situation and in light of the fact that, um, uh, I would not like to have the, um, an increase. I would leave my, um, salary the same that he was at 10. 3, something like that. Sorry.
I'll take.
Increased. Everybody says I'm rolling in box, but, you know, in light of the situation that we have and the, uh, virus and all of that, uh, I don't think that is something that I need. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, any other comments on the, uh, payroll chart?
Is it, so are you just for yourself or all of the trustees? How is that working? I'm sorry.
That is for me. I'm only speaking of myself, for myself. Uh, they would have to speak for themselves, I believe. It's not been a point of discussion that we've had, um, because personally I've just seen this today, although I've mentioned in the past that, um, I did not want an increase, so.
At the, at the budget workshop, um, at the end, it was mentioned that we would do a, an increase.
Well, I am not going to because at the budget workshop, we didn't have the same situation we do now.
No, I know. I was just explaining where that came from.
All right.
There's still a necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we make so much money doing this. I.
Yeah.
That's the way it is, you know? I don't need, uh, we don't need the increase at this point. Worry about that next year.
All right.
Where's everybody?
I'm here.
Okay.
What's the difference? Is that, is that why?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sharing my screen right now. You should be able to see it.
No, it's 100, 156 dollars. Yes. I don't need it.
We're fine.
Hey, all these retirees raking in the money to social security pension. Geez.
Yeah.
All right. Then, uh, with the, um, the negotiations pending, uh, I would ask for approval of the Village of Webster payroll chart, um, with the changes just made for 2020-21.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Gotta be quick for real.
I think I beat you on that one.
Yeah, I think you did.
Really?
Thank you.
Yep. From my point, I was there for me. Oh, we can get so slow going. Oh, I know. Okay.
Trusty Lauer?
Hi.
Trusty Lancy?
Hi.
You got the last one, Mr. Valcain.
I don't care.
Trusty Valcain?
Hi.
This is so much fun.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is, uh, the, um, tentative budget and, um, I'll just note, uh, modifications that have been made and then ask for a motion to, um, uh, adopt the modified budget. If you take a look, uh, sorry folks, that's my phone upgrade, updating itself. Um, we have, uh, three items that have changed in the, um, revenues. One is property tax. Uh, the original presented, um, revenue was $538,576. That has changed to, um, $534,369, which is a difference of 4,207. Um, we have payments in lieu of taxes. Uh, the initial presentation was 61,000 and the corrected projected budget is 60,284, which is a deficit of 70, $716. And one more, um, which is, um, uh, let's see. I believe those might have been it. I think those are the two. Is that correct, Heather? Or?
Yeah, I heard it. The sewer burden, we freeze by $150.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Al. All right. Carl.
Uh, page seven, there's a, a change in our reserves, transfer to reserves.
That's correct. That's, that's how we're going to make up that difference. So, uh, the total that we need to make up is $4,923, which, uh, we will change from our reserves being 83,088 to 78,165. So we'll have a slight dip in our reserves to make up for the loss, uh, in revenue.
Uh, $150 change in the sewer charge, um, is coming out of Engineering and Professional Services since we were kind of playing with that account as our numbers change in the board.
Okay. Yeah.
So that goes from that particular line, uh, which is, um, GG 8130 for 60. That goes from $9,161 to $9,011. And that's the $150, uh, that we need to make up for the, uh, property tax sewer charges, right?
Oh, you also, Harold, you also not just modified the budget by the mayor and the trustees not taking salary increases. So you need to adjust those lines and it's only a couple hundred bucks, but either, it's either gonna change the tax rate slightly or add it back into the reserves. It'll be a little more going into reserves than what you thought.
That would work.
But you need to, Marsha, you need to remember to do that, otherwise you're gonna, you've appropriated more money for the mayor and trustees than agreed to spend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So are we agreed then on going to increase the transfer to reserves by the difference in the board's salaries?
And the mayor's salary. It's like 400 and some odd dollars.
Okay.
Uh, at least I'm in favor of that. I would be in favor of putting that back into the reserves since, uh, yeah.
Bye. Yeah.
So Marsha, I don't know if you're doing a quick calculation on that or not, but the difference that we have in terms of the mayor and trustees' salaries, uh, they would remain the same, but the difference that you had proposed, that would go into the, um, reserves.
Okay, I can hear those numbers in one second.
They're in the, um, projected, uh, budget modification.
Okay, that's a difference of 93602. And now we're putting into reserves. 79% 101 dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you, Marsha.
You betcha.
Okay, so, uh, at this point then I would move to, uh, item number four, uh, which is a resolution to adopt the modified 2020-21 budget for general and sewer funds. And I have a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Hi, I was thinking of, Trusty Lancy?
Hi.
I'm here. Trusty Valcain?
Hi.
Trusty Lauer?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Yay, my first budget.
Congratulations, Marsha. Good job, Marsha. Good job.
Very good. Yes.
You're our hero. You're our hero.
No, we're happy we have you.
Well, mutual. I'm very glad to be here.
Okay, item number five, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Uh, I believe that they have gone out to all of you through email. Uh, does anybody have, uh, any questions or concerns regarding the, um, claims and warrants? Either for general?
Yeah, I didn't for either one.
I didn't see any, Harold.
There's so few.
I didn't either, so, uh, then I would, um, offer this up by, uh, a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Did we lose you, Al?
I'm there.
Okay, okay. Trusty Lauer?
Hi.
Trusty Lancy?
Hi.
Trusty Valcain?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Um, and now for, uh, item number six. Uh, this is, uh, for a, uh, resolution to authorize the mayor, uh, to consent that the town of Webster will be the lead agency for the lake road ready projects and further resolve that the mayor is authorized to sign and return the consent form signifying the same on behalf of the village. So.
Hi.
If I could have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lancy?
Hi.
Trusty Lauer?
Hi.
Trusty Valcain?
Hi.
Mayor Byers?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, Don, do you have anything you'd like to bring up to the board this evening?
Uh, no, everything is quiet.
Yes, it is quiet. Uh, okay, uh, Jake, Department of Public Works in Sewer.
Yep, just an update, um, you know, everybody's still, uh, plugging along. We're keeping our crews separated and, and split up. Um, we were able to in the last, it was the last week and finishing up this week, we did their brush cleanup for our April brush cleanup and then did the spring cleanup of the leaves, uh, which they wrapped up today. Uh, went around and got the curb lines again, um, in the west area of Wilmeright Track. So that's all wrapped up. Um, then we're gonna continue on with our normal spring cleanup activities, you know, with the abbreviated crews, but we're gonna start doing the, uh, you know, the plow damage or picking up sod. Um, depending on the crew that we have on, we're either gonna be doing sidewalks or, um, along the road depending on how many people we have. So, uh, but we'll continue on and, and doing those things and getting ready to see what, uh, what they will deem essential that we can, we can get going on. Um, sidewalks are still tentatively planned. You know, the north side of East Main Street, uh, still planned, uh, for the spring. But it's just, um, as soon as the crews are, you know, the contractors are working again and I'm sure they're gonna be, have a really busy schedule once they start. Um, so we're, uh, looking forward to getting that done though.
Uh, Jake, I'm gonna be.
I just asked a question, Jake. What kind of grassy you use on the sidewalks?
Okay, grass, weedsy.
Yeah, it just like never comes back. It's like a bunch of weeds.
Wheaty.
Uh, wheaty, yeah.
Well, it's, um, one of the things that we always try to work with people, make sure that, you know, if there's grass along their front yard, that they water it, uh, the grass comes up. But, you know, it does a lot better with that. Uh, the grass comes up, you know, it does a lot better with that. We find when people water it, the grass starts and kind of chokes out some of the weeds, and if they don't, seems like the weeds take over. Um, but it's a, it's a landscape, uh, it's a landscape mix. I think it's a county, uh, county blend is what they have on the uh, on the contract. So it's, so I guess, I don't wanna say it's the lowest bidder, uh, but it's not the most expensive stuff. Uh, but it's a, it's a general landscape mix that we, that we use there, so.
So, I would like, more herb will make it better.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Watering it more will make it better, that's what we.
Think so. We have, we have, you know, pretty decent luck in areas if we do it around, uh, we ended up watering it. It seems like it, it, it does a little bit clear than areas where it dries out more and then you get whatever is mixed in with the topsoil. The topsoil typically has organics in it, it's gonna have seeds mixed in the topsoil too. Uh, just as, as, you know, the organic materials breaking down is kind of what's left as a seed and that gets planted too, so sometimes it's with the topsoil itself.
Where do we get our topsoil from, Jake?
Oh, depends on the time of year and where we need it. Like, I'm getting some from Welch's tomorrow. It's really close by. Sometimes there's a place in Penfield. Sometimes early on in the year, there's Morrison that has it that's inside. Um, but typically if it's inside, and they have inside and outside, but if we need to get it from inside where it's dry, so they can, they can run the topsoil, um, it's quite a bit more, so we try to, we try to do the uh, you know, with the most economical in terms of the total figures, you know, the guys going to get it, their turnaround time, the vehicle, you know, the time it takes to round trip plus the topsoil itself.
I think that is uh, probably pretty significant uh, in terms of what, what grows. Uh, so if there's difference between the seed and the topsoil, I think it's probably more the topsoil personally. And watering it too, so people need to be conscious of the fact that they need deep and moist.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that uh, what Judy was saying about uh, what kind of seeds we get is that Park Avenue last year looked like uh, you know, a hedgerow grown out of there. It was pretty rough, real, full of weeds, all the way down Park Ave.
That's what just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and again, it could function where the topsoil itself came from. That topsoil, I think that was the, the contractor um, who was getting that, was to the, um, I'm trying to remember if we did the restoration, they did the restoration, so I think they got the topsoil on that one too. So when they have the topsoil, um, depends on where they're getting from and the organics that were in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty rough stuff.
I'll make sense, thank you.
Anything else, Jake? Sure? You doing okay?
Yeah, I think that it's, it's flowing, um.
Alright. You know, the guys handling it? Do they still come in uh, one in the morning, one seven one in the afternoon, or have they changed that?
No, we, we have uh, we've, we split it up, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there's one guy each day. And then on Thursday and Friday, there's, you know, one guy comes in in the morning, one midday, and one does the afternoon labs and things, but they're, they don't cross over. There's a gap in between, you know, there's between, in between the different crews coming in, so we keep that isolated and we keep everybody separate.
Okay. Alright. Uh, if you have other concerns or things to bring up to the board, then does anyone else have anything that they'd like to uh, speak to this evening?
Nope, I just wanted to know where all the fire um, trucks went this afternoon.
Uh, I think there was a fire on Creater on uh, the road. There it sounded like. I was uh, I was trying to order salt for next year and not having much luck, so I did not end up going.
Okay.
Um, seems like the state's having trouble with that part of their website. I don't know if it's what the deal is, so I sent an email out trying to, so we have to have our salt allocation. We have to let them know we need next winter before uh, like the second week of May. So, I get that ordered um, as quick as we can. And then just hope the winner cooperates with what we ordered.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Alright.
Byers, if I could ask?
Well, uh, I would.
What's here? Can I ask one thing?
Just one thing.
Okay, so um, the office, we had a little bit of a scare the other day with the WIA grant, and I don't know, Jake can probably um, chime in on this a little bit, but we were, we got an email that kind of confused us, telling us that there was a call scheduled with EFC this week or next week, and we have um, paperwork that we have to get to, to EFC, um, and we weren't aware that it needed, it was on hold. So um, if, when that call takes place, it would be really helpful if Marcia could listen in or Jake could listen in, just so that the office knows what we're supposed to send, because we've got what we had to do for the, um, Jake, do you wanna help?
Yeah, they sent a, they sent a follow-up email that that is not taking place next week. Um, there's, there's not a meeting. They're gonna wait, um, till they get a little bit more information. They're reviewing some plans, some additional, I guess, alternatives or options that have to be submitted to review, and then they're, uh, then they're gonna have the call, so.
There's just stuff that the office has to send out and we weren't aware that we weren't supposed to send it yet, so if someone could just give us an update of when we, if, when and if we need to send paperwork out, that would be helpful.
Where is it, where, who do we, who gets this information in our office?
I do.
Um, yeah, but, well, she gets it, but, so we, we had something we thought was due to the EFC to, to conform with the grant, but um, there was a, you know, there's trying to decide what to do between the town and the village right now, so it was on hold, which was fine, but we just didn't know that the paperwork wasn't due, so it just, if we don't have someone from our office on the EFC call, we don't know where someone tells us.
Yeah, then.
We don't know where.
Alright, alright, that makes sense then, but, so Marcia's gonna be it?
If, if we could, I mean, it probably would make more sense if it was Jake, just because he.
Yeah, Jake's.
And, I mean, Marcia, you can if you want to, but um, just so that we know what to do and understand it better, maybe Jake should be that. Or Marcia can just listen to.
Have they given a date, a new date for the call?
No, no, the, the um, I think there was a, a misunderstanding on that call, I guess, that they, that they emailed and said that they had out, uh, basically from the email, um, that I saw the other day. Uh, there was a call uh, with EFC with the town and the village, and there was a, another follow-up call with the towns engineer. Um, and they have some uh, direction from that, um, that they're going to, um, from my understanding, talking to Clem, uh, from La Bella, is they're going to uh, get together different financing options, submit those to the EFC. The EFC, and from what I understand, just like most state agencies won't tell you, hey, here's what you should do, they say, submit it and then we'll tell you. Um, so they have to submit a couple different options, um, and see, um, you know, what I gathered and what I got, um, from the uh, summary of the conversations, you know, in a nutshell, EFC will not, you know, they can't transfer the hardship financing to a regional project, um, which is at zero percent plus the grant, um, at this time, so they're looking at it, you know, see if they can, look at it a slightly different way. Um, and then after that, they should uh, should have the information that the board needs relatively soon, I would expect.
Okay, thank you.
The stuff that we, the office has to send, if it doesn't get in a deadline or something, then we could risk losing all the funding, so if you guys would just let us know, we appreciate it.
Well, I think for us, we have until basically the end of the year, because the uh, WIA grant and whatever that we're looking at individually or just the village uh, has a deadline of twenty twenty-one, I believe, right? So, I think we have it. It waited until the town does, so.
Yeah, and we reiterated that, or Clem reiterated that yesterday. Uh, and our, you know, the engineer from La Bella said that it was a, we followed up with EFC, that was a twenty twenty-one date, but obviously, um, if ultimately if we had to go ahead with a village-only project, assuming we want to secure that sooner rather than later, um, or in either project, we're gonna get going, uh, once it's decided.
Yep, I agree. Should be done sooner than later.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
No, just everybody.
And our next meeting, um, for uh, May fourteenth, and I believe that we will still be uh, on the um, uh, call-in here, so we'll see what happens. Not yet. Eighteen forty, which is the, what, the deadline or whatever, the date that the uh, governor has put there for. Any change or whatever for uh, in place, being placed, all that? Okay, well, anything else?
One last thing, sorry, uh.
Saturday? Saturday with Dan Flaherty?
Uh, yeah.
Were you on that call? I missed it more, um.
Well, I missed it, yeah, 'cause I was um, having fun with unemployment.
Was he at the eleven o'clock on Saturday?
Uh, it tentatively was. Uh, I don't know who made it, because I myself was, was out of that, so.
That wasn't good.
It's, it is tentative for eleven o'clock on uh, Saturday. Okay.
Okay, and then just, um, just so I can say, just anyone listening, um, going forward while we're on video conferences, the, the access code from today's meeting will be the same, um, for any upcoming meetings, just so that helps.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's good, because that's, that's the way we have it at, at the attorney's office.
If there's any special meetings needed, that will have to be separate, but as a, we'll use the same one.
Okay.
And I would propose that if uh, you do not want to uh, call in a question or comment, you can submit that through email and it can be uh, read uh, during the meeting, okay? Alright, in that case, uh, good to see you all, and um, around in the office, good to see you, Megan. And uh, Steve, Marcia, I see you, Joe, I see you quite a bit, and Heather, I'm glad you're, I think, out of quarantine. Is that correct?
No, she's on the.
The keeper there, yeah.
Everybody stand up in the back.
Oh, God.
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Yes, hope you well, everyone.
You're welcome.
You have to adjourn. Sorry, we have to adjourn.
Don's got something.
Harold?
I haven't even. Well, I didn't know what it was.
That does. Nice to see you, Carol. No, he was just waving. Somebody shut up now.
Uh, thank, uh.
Are we adjourned?
Uh, uh, yes, we are, and it is uh, seven fifty-one and the meeting is adjourned. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Right, worship carry. Good to see everyone.
Bye.
Here she is. Bye.
Bye.